Call me in order and call councilman.
Here, Father. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Steve, would you put the agenda? Call the row.
Councilman Poole.
Here.
Councilman Cotton.
Here.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Here.
Councilman Watson.
Here.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Welcome my visitors. Glad y'all could join us today. And next item is, I have a proclamation. I'm gonna read the proclamation first and then I'll ask some members of the Escamie County Blueberry Growers Association to come forward and I'll present it. Proclamation. In recognition of the industrial leaders that keep our city viable, whereas the city of Bruton seeks to honor the companies, individuals, and workers who keep our city economically viable, and whereas industrial leaders make a significant contribution to the national, state, and local economy, and whereas those companies and their leaders, companies, add to the vitality and prosperity of our community through generous community partnerships and create demand for spinoff industry and services, and whereas the Escamie County Blueberry Growers Association has worked in cooperation for decades to bolster the agricultural industry in and around our city, and whereas the Escamie County Blueberry Growers Association has played a significant role in promoting our city as the blueberry capital of Alabama and home to the annual Alabama Blueberry Festival each June, and whereas the Escamie County Blueberry Growers Association markets products around the country providing local jobs and quality locally grown produce, now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor of the city of Bruton, Alabama, that the Escamie County Blueberry Growers Association be honored by the city and its residents as Bruton Industrial Champion, proclaimed this 13th day of June 2016. Nancy Lovelace, Mayor. Y'all come forward, I'll present this ticket.
Mr. Coppers, one of those growers, they didn't make...
They're working hard. Congratulations. I appreciate it. Thank you. And I do encourage everyone to come to the Blueberry Festival this Saturday.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Roger, on behalf of the city council, I'd like to ask some questions. I'm curious. When blueberry season is over this year, from the blueberry shed up there and all the people that are participating as growers and people that are with the local association, how many pounds of blueberries will be shipped out this year? Estimation?
About sixty thousand. Our highest year was a hundred and ten thousand.
Okay.
Thank you. Congratulations. Approval of last meeting's minutes. I make a motion to approve that meeting made after any further.
Motion by Councilman Kerry Barton to approve the minutes from the last meeting, seconded by Councilman Fred Barton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries and the minutes from the previous meeting are approved.
Approval of the agenda.
Mayor, the council has a copy of the agenda. There's a copy on the wall for those in the audience. Are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda? Hearing none. Those who would like to approve it in the form as presented, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Ayes have it. The agenda is approved as presented.
Next item is a public hearing on Sapphire Hospitality Grant. I call a public hearing to order and ask if there's anyone here would like to speak in favor of Sapphire Hospitality Grant. Or is there anybody here that wants to speak in opposition? And I'll now vote for a public hearing.
Mayor, from a presentation that was given to the city council over a month ago, we passed a resolution to publish the public hearing for today, but there were also some specifics that were spelled out in that meeting as to why granting any kind of public assistance to Sapphire Hospitality would be in the interest of economic development in the city of Bruton. Those items that were stated are as follows. A modern motel is essential for promoting economic development by giving a desirable place to stay for tourists, guests, or workers who come to Bruton. Approximately three million dollars will be spent on a building renovation project in Bruton to open a motel offering eighty rooms for occupancy and conference rooms for use. It was stated that a vacant building deemed unsafe and unfit for use will be totally renovated and brought into conformity with current building codes, thus improving the appearance of its location in Bruton. It was stated that twenty to thirty people will receive gainful employment with the opening of the motel. It was stated that the motel business projected to generate a million dollars in sales annually and up to twenty thousand dollars in lodging tax yearly. It was stated that the project involves extensive demolition of the current structure, requiring an unknown number of loads of debris to be dumped in a local landfill. So we have a resolution prepared for the council if they see fit to act upon it. A change would be that any landfill dumping fees incurred only from using the Bruton city landfill would be subject to reimbursement at fifty percent up to a total amount of twenty thousand dollars, and that would be assisting Sapphire Hospitality in their reconstruction and renovation efforts. That again is up to the city council if they see fit to support this measure.
Mr. Yous, does that require a three-step or just a...
No, sir. This just requires a motion and a second and a vote.
I'll vote for motion to approve sixteen dash zero six one three.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fred Barton to approve resolution number sixteen dash zero six one three, seconded by Councilman Kerry Barton. Is there any discussion?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
And this is contingent upon the hotel opening.
Oh, yes.
And the paying of all fees, and then the reimbursement would occur after that.
Yes, sir. The way the resolution is gonna be structured is it would be paying landfill fees to the city of Bruton landfill, and it would be contingent upon the motel opening, and then after they opened, that would occur. So I guess, yeah, the resolution does state when the motel opens for business. I wanted to make sure that was clear in there. Any other questions? Motion by Councilman Fred Barton, seconded by Councilman Kerry Barton. Is there any discussion?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
And this is contingent upon the hotel opening.
Oh, yes.
And the paying of all fees, and then the reimbursement would occur after that.
Yes, sir. The way the resolution is gonna be structured is it would be paying landfill fees to the city of Bruton landfill, and it would be contingent upon the motel opening, and then after they open, that would occur. So I guess, yeah, the resolution does state when the motel opens for business. I wanted to make sure that was clear in there. Any other questions? Motion by Councilman Fred Barton, seconded by Councilman Kerry Barton. Hearing no other discussion, Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number sixteen dash zero six one three is approved.
Next item is another public hearing. This is on a request from the DOT shop. Call a public hearing to order on a grant request from the DOT shop. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of that grant? Or is there anyone here that would want to speak in opposition to that grant? Public hearing.
Again, Mayor, well over a month ago, facts were presented in the council chambers, and the council voted to set up this public hearing and publish notice in the local newspaper that public funds may be used to assist the DOT shop. It was stated in the council meeting over a month ago that it would be positive and helpful for economic development in the city of Bruton to assist the DOT shop, and it was stated in this manner. A building in the downtown Bruton historic district would be occupied for use, thus improving the condition of the structure and attracting shoppers to the downtown area. It was stated that the estimated monthly income to be generated by the DOT shop would be from seven thousand five hundred twenty dollars to twenty four thousand eight hundred dollars. It was stated that anticipated monthly taxes produced by the business would range from three hundred dollars to nine hundred ninety-two dollars. It was stated that a business would start with employment for the owner, a full-time worker, hire workers seasonally, and add a full-time carpenter as soon as possible. The business owner stated in the business plan that part of the funds, or part of the desire request for making, request for funds assisted at the city of Bruton would be able to make some specific building improvements in the building in which the business would be housed. So a resolution has been prepared if the city council sees fit to support it. An award up to two thousand dollars would be given to the DOT shop to be used for specific building improvements stated in the owner's business plan that would include painting the exterior of the building and/or replacing the front awnings.
I'll vote motion to approve resolution number sixteen zero six thirteen dash one.
Second. Motion by Councilman Watson to approve resolution number sixteen dash zero six one three dash one, seconded by Councilman Fred Barton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes and resolution number sixteen dash zero six one three dash one is approved.
Next item is another old business. The term of Stephanie Walker is inspired on Bruton City Board of Education, and I appointed a committee with Councilman Poole as chair and Councilman Watson on that committee, and I call him Councilman Poole for a report.
Mayor, the committee makes a recommendation that Ann Peach be placed on the board to replace the term of Stephanie Walker.
Second. So Councilman Poole, the first motion comes from you, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And Councilman Watson, the second, right?
Yes.
Motion by Councilman Poole that Ann Peach be nominated to serve on the Bruton City School Board, seconded by Councilman Watson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes and Ann Peach is appointed to the Bruton City School Board.
Next item on the new business is approval of accounts payable. I make a motion to be approved.
Second. Second, was that you, Councilman Fred Barton?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Councilman Kerry Barton to approve accounts payable, seconded by Councilman Fred Barton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and accounts payable are approved.
Next item is appointing poll workers for the municipal election. I call them the city council.
I'm sure this comes as a complete surprise to all those on the panel and all those in the audience, but we're going to have a municipal election this summer on August the 23rd. If there's a need for a runoff, it'll be October the 4th. But this list of poll workers has been produced with every intent to put folk as best we can in the district in which they reside, and I think we've almost done that totally well, but these are all registered voters in the city of Bruton, and these are all individuals, most of whom have experience working as a poll worker, so that's good. We had some who've done it a long time and they needed to be replaced, but I believe we have competent, capable people serving as their replacement. So in order for this to be approved, I'll need a motion and a second and a vote from the council.
Make a motion to approve sixteen dash zero six one three dash...
Second two. Got that question, I have a second.
Did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion by Councilman Fred Barton to approve resolution number sixteen dash zero six one three dash two, seconded by Councilman Cotton. Is there any discussion?
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
Do we know when is the deadline for absentee ballot? Absentee ballot, when is the deadline ever turning to you?
The deadline when they have to be returning to me? I'll nail all those dates down. Offhand, I'm thinking it's five days before the election, but I can nail all that down. We're currently working on the voters' list and getting all the election supplies in order. They'll be ordered on July the 20th qualifying is from July 5th to July 19th, so absentee ballots will be available as soon as the order is supplied by ESS of Birmingham. Any other questions? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and resolution number sixteen dash zero six one three dash two is approved.
Next item is a presentation by Rob's Taxi Service, and I call on Representative Rob Taxi Service.
Hi, everyone doing today?
I am.
I'm the owner of Rob's Taxi Service. I was wondering, could I come here and, you know, cater to Bruton and do some taxiing down here and help people that's disabled and people that don't have, you know, valuable transportation to get back and forth to the doctor's office for affordable rates, you know, and someone that's really needing someone to look out for them, you know, like if they need to get to out of town or something. I'm willing to bring that to the table to help them out if I can.
According to the Code of Ordinances, if someone wants to open and operate a taxi in the city of Bruton, they have to make representation to make that request from the city council, and it requires a vote by the council. You'll have his business license fee and the issuance fee to pay, but it requires council approval. Unlike many businesses, they can just open up on their own, but this one requires council approval.
So you're gonna motion, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fred Barton to approve Rob's Taxi Service to open and do business in Bruton, seconded by Councilman Kerry Barton. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Rob Taxi Service, how are you, sir?
I'm good, sir. How are you?
Very good. What is your, what would your hours be of operation?
Well, I was trying to do twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours. Round the clock.
Yes, sir.
How many people do you plan to employ?
Well, right now it's gonna be one, 'cause it's hard to trust someone to, you know, be faithful and deal with people on a level of making it work and...
Are you gonna stay up twenty-four hours?
Yes, sir. I stay twenty-four hours in Evergreen.
Then I wanna ride in that taxi.
Yes, sir.
And what's your location going to be?
Well, location, right now I gotta find somewhere to set up, but right now it's just that, you know, I wanna cover the grounds with you all first.
Once we get, once we approve, where you going? When will you, when will be ready for?
Well, sir, if I can find a located spot that's reasonable, I'll be, you know, it'll be here in town. I mean, I stay here now, and I'm willing to be a resident and make sure everybody on the same page with me, you know.
Let me say one thing. I know this guy. While y'all home sleeping, he's out there working.
Yeah.
And I support you a hundred percent, 'cause he's a good man and a hard worker.
Question, I guess it'd be to the clerk. If there's issues with him, I guess, is it not legal? I mean, like say, for example, does somebody have an accident, somebody that's who you, we're not liable, or there's anything possible happen? Would the code enforcement be involved in this, or just we take it for word that everything's legit?
He's operating a business. It would be my figure and my understanding, he's liable and responsible and accountable for the operation of his business. He's just coming to you guys asking for approval to open a business in town.
Maybe offer up an, I'm sorry. Yes, maybe offer up just an opinion to you?
Yes, sir.
I'd recommend that you hire another employee at least because of the hours of operation.
I got another employee, you know, Mr. Jody.
Okay.
It's just the fact of, like I say, I gotta, you know, make sure everybody on the same page, 'cause I wanna be able to have the customers to where they trust you, you know, 'cause that's based on life right now. If everybody trusts each other, you can get along better. But dealing with twelve at one o'clock at night, when people sleeping, I still be out there in calls, four-thirty, five o'clock in the morning, and there's people that need to go to the huddle house or maybe to the airport, you know, and that's the only reason. It's just gotta be somebody dedicated and willing, you know.
Very good.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and approval is given.
Thank you all. Y'all be blessed.
Are there any coming?
We have two, Mayor. The first to come from the Bruton, East Bruton area Chamber of Commerce.
I would just like to thank the council for their support of chamber events and formally request permission to use the Jennings Park for the Blueberry Festival this upcoming Saturday, and to request permission for our signs to be hung around town this week that we'll collect after the festival.
What if we said nothing?
I've asked that question and kept my fingers crossed that you won't say nothing.
I'll vote motion to approve.
Thank you.
Who made the second? Was that you? Motion by Councilman Fred Barton, seconded by Councilman Kerry Barton to grant permission for use of Jennings Park for the Blueberry Festival and be able to put up necessary directional signs for the Blueberry Festival. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I got, I got one, okay? When we doing this, this street signage, what street's gonna be closed? Or any street's gonna be closed?
There, we close Persimmon Street downtown the morning of the festival, and I believe Highway forty-one is, will be closed from the Welcome Center intersection to about Ray's Cleaners during the festival.
The reason I asked that question, there was an event here a month or two ago, and they was told that could I close forty-one. What make y'all any different than closing forty-one and not any visuals being? I like to know that. I like to ask that.
Well, I believe because that is a state highway, we received approval from the state to close it, and I can't answer why they would...
So you tell me the state is picking you who close their roads?
That's my, that's my understanding, and so I wouldn't know why they wouldn't approve it for another event. This will be our thirty-sixth annual event, and that could have something to do with it.
Okay, thank you.
My question to you would be, is there any rules or regulations that you guys have imposed that the council would at least know about on Saturday?
Not, in addition to, nothing new that we've created since past years. We have reviewed some rules of the car show and the way that the car show is judged, and we have amended some of those regulations.
Okay. Why you brought up car show, is it mandatory for the participants to register their vehicle?
We do feel that it should be mandatory for participants in the car show to register a vehicle, because that will help distinguish between anyone looking for a close onsite parking spot and those that are actually participating in the car show. And we've also, there will be a panel of three judges for the car show, and there will be a score sheet should there be any disputes over the awards that could be reviewed.
Reason I asked that question, there was some issues previous years back to where participants feel like their car was not being judged at all, let alone being fair or not, that the car was just not being judged, it was just, the guy, the judge was just riding by on the golf cart, and that guy has registered his vehicle but not getting a fair shot at any prize or prizes that may be given away at that particular time.
Yes, sir. Those issues were presented to me, and then I in turn presented them to the Blueberry Festival Committee and to the Chamber Board of Directors, and that's when the decision was made to have a score sheet and a panel of judges for the car show.
Any other questions? Okay. Have a motion by Councilman Fred Barton and a second by Councilman Kerry Barton. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval is so granted.
Thank you.
Mayor, secondly, we have Beth Billy.
Mayor, Councilman, I appreciate you allowing me to piggyback on the Bruton Chamber, and my first request is that you don't ask me as many questions as you asked him. You can ask me all the questions that you want, but I am asking for similar permission to utilize the O'Bannon Park Pavilion and also to put signage up to sponsor a Blueberry five K race that will begin at O'Bannon Park and will go for three point one miles from Sowell Street out of O'Bannon, across St. Nicholas, up Belville, across West Jackson, you know, front of the library, down Evergreen and back up Belville and around to Sowell Road again. And there are three, what I would say would be major intersections that we would need some police presence there, and I'll have some volunteers there as well, but the St. Nicholas or Highway forty-one there and the Sowell Street intersection there. I don't know that it will be closed there, but we may need to, we definitely need police presence there to allow the runners out of the gate. That will be the biggest traffic area at that time, pretty much all at one time. And then the Belville Avenue-Sowell Street intersection would be another one, and West Jackson, they'll have to cross Belville Avenue over to West Jackson to get across the street there. And then Evergreen, there are other, probably five other minor intersections that we may ask. We've, I have sent the information to the Chief McGugan to ask, you know, his opinion on that, and, but we would have volunteers at those points. Most of those are four-way stops, and the runners, you know, they'll be, they will be staggered at that time, but we will have people there, you know, staged at each point. So if, with your approval, I would appreciate it. The funds are used to sponsor a scholarship, the Matthew Hutton Billy Memorial Scholarship, which has been funded since 2001 primarily by family and friends, and the last, last year we raised about six thousand dollars, and we sponsor scholarships for students who are duly enrolled in Jeff Davis Community College and Huntington College Bachelor's Program. So that's what those funds are utilized for, and they are funneled through the JDCC Foundation and then directly to students. So I respectfully request your blessing, approval.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Fred Barton to grant approval for the Blueberry five K fund run to use O'Bannon Park and to coordinate their course with the Bruton Police Department, seconded by Councilman Cotton. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Billy's gonna be a busy day.
I hope so.
What I'm concerned about is all the roads you're gonna interchange, you're gonna cross over into, and just make sure, and I understand you got a list there for the police department.
Yeah, would you like a, would y'all like a copy?
I think we should have a copy.
Sure.
I would just ask you to make sure that, you know, you do get with the police department to make sure that there's coverage on these streets.
Absolutely.
That you gotta cross over from one to the other.
Absolutely, yeah. They, they were, frankly, helped a lot with your actions, and, you know, the way that we're able to...
Pass it back.
Thank you.
But certainly will do that.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval is so granted. No other comments, Mayor. No other announcements either.